Thank you. Good morning, everyone in the house.
Ralidumedi sabaha isho, ratajolala, amokala loche, baba lente infano.
We are here as the Portfolio Committee of the National Assembly, responsible for mineral resources and energy.
Unz is the portfolio committee for the National of Khadrang Front World for Mineral Holbrunen Energy.
Ronar, the portfolio committee yakukwana wasachaba miri karabelaka, it is ompeleza di minerali le energy.
On my left, we have got Honorable Lorima.
On my linker kant, it is achpare Lorimer.
Kafamujemwa, aronar nale, emutotlachi, Marina.
Next to him, we have Honorable Zungula.
Langs ometos achpare Zungula.
Ebe, renale mutotlachi, Zungula.
Next to Honorable Zungula, we have Honorable Madokwe.
Langs achpare Zungula, tos achpare Madokwe.
Fatokohakajahwe, renale mutotlachi, Madokwe.
Next to me, on my left, we have Honorable Mashawle.
Langs hori, tos achpare Mashawle.
Me, kafatokohakajahwe, boholate, la mutotlachi, Mashawle.
On my right, to me, is Honorable Bilankulu.
On my rechter kant, it is achpare Bilankulu.
Me, kafamujemwa, me, bekennale, mutotlachi, Bilankulu.
Next to him is Honorable Malinga.
Langs ometos achpare Malinga.
Fatokohakajahwe, boholate, la mutotlachi, Malinga.
Next to Honorable Malinga is Honorable Vollmarans.
Langs ometos achpare Vollmarans.
Fatokohakajahwe, mutotlachi, Malinga, ebe na, mutotlachi, Vollmarans.
Next to Honorable Vollmarans is Honorable Professor Simang.
Langs achpare Vollmarans is achpare Professor Simanga.
Me, fatokohakajahwe, mutotlachi, Vollmarans, ebe renale mutotlachi, mo Professara, Simang.
I'm Mr. Luzipu, the chairperson of the portfolio committee.
Akis, meneer Luzipu, akis, the forecaster of your committee.
Naki na, eh, mutotlachi, eh, Luzipu, eh, ke, mo dula situlewa, portfolio committee.
Like I said, we are the portfolio committee of the National Assembly on mineral resources and energy, not the Department of Mineral Resources and Energy.
So, as I've heard you say, unz is the committee for mineral holbrunen energy, unz is not the department of mineral holbrunen energy, no.
Jakakileka thalosa, ronar, recomite ya, eh, it is ompeleza di minerali le energy, karere fa pa, la it is ompeleza di minerali le energy.
We are here because the department made proposals for the... the... one.
Unz is here, because the department proposed the wisegings gemalki to the gas rate from 2001.
Refano, kalabakanagore, le fa pa li dirile di mametele, lo mote, jamolautomo wa, eh, gase, wa 2001.
So, the procedure is that, amongst other things that a committee can consider, is to do consultations with, eh, with the public on the proposed amendments.
This is one of the options that the committee has, is to consults with the public on these proposed wisegings.
Kajalo, thulohanye, eh, thwanzeh, hola te la fano, fati kororona, jakakomite, thwane te korore, rete, rey hukwa, ma yikuwa, ama loko, asachaba, kadi mametele, le tenu, tedi dirilwe, kamolautomo on.
So, we decided to do what is called public consultation on the proposed amendments.
Darum it is our choice to do public consultations on these proposed wisegings.
Kajalo, kiosalesere, klenho, zirafano, fa, kota, kothakshubisi, sa, kaha, ma yikuwa, alonaka, di mametele, le tenu, tedi dirilwe, momolautomo.
We started with this process on the 13th of November, 2021.
Unzet, herei proces begin, will be 13th of November, 2021.
Resimulize thulohanye, eh, ekadi 13th of November, 2021.
The first province was Mpumalanga.
First province, what is besuk, it was Mpumalanga.
So, province ya, ncha, ernerelego, yona, inele ya Mpumalanga.
Northern Cape is the sixth province now.
The newer cop is the sixth province, what is dance besuk.
Me, ebe na, province Elatelang, ya, kapabukoni.
Free State will be the last province on this land.
The Free State will be the last province, we is op herei dur.
Province Free State, it lohna, province Abofela, kudira, jalo, kohyo.
So, we are here because of the proposals by the department to amend the Gas Act of 2001.
Darum is us here, um, the wisegings, what the department proposed, it is where the gas rate from 2001.
Kajalo, refano, fa, kota, kota, kadi mametele, le tenu, ele, gordititintwe, kele fa pa, sona, sa, molau onuwa gase.
There are few proposals that they are making, one of those is that there has to be a penalty of not less than 2 million rand a day for any operator who is non-compliant.
Darus, a par wisegings, what gemalk were, the forstale, verwisegings, one of them is that there a daglikse butte of heving might be is op enige operateer, what ni, eh, inskiklik is, medhi vorwardes, vani wetni, and herei butte is, oer 2 million rand per day.
Eh, we ya, di mametele, le tenu, tedi dirilwe, ke ya, korre, ya, amanale, eh, tuwedi sokochao, eh, etan tedi wangoto, opa fe la yo, ele, koraka, diri melao, enu, eh, amanale, gase, koya ka taolo, me, tuwedi sokochao, ya, te, etana, esin, kafatlasa, ja, di millioni, dili tu, kaman, so, man, 2 million randa, kalisats.
They also propose that if the operator is non-compliant, the license can be reviewed or revoked by the department or the regulator.
Darus, are weke forstale, that operateer, what ni inskiklik is, medhi wetni, he'll, lisensis, can verlor, it can opgeskoort word, it can be auto malwageniem word, dear, the department, or the regulator there.
Me, eh, we ya, this is, yo, tedi intitwe, ke ya, korre, hamoto, asa dirijalo, license ya, kahwe, ekana ya, sekaseko, ya, lejo, kota, atelo, license eh, yo, ele, tuwedi sokochao, eh, kota, bakana, badira, korre, enekhanya, tuwedi sokochao, mogole, eh, we mogudi.
The further, the other proposals include the exploration of a land on behalf of the operator, if it's in the interest, in the public interest.
Darus, are weke forstale, that grunt and ein can word, namens, di, eh, handelar, so that, in the belong, we is, vani public, um, grunt and ein.
Eh, we ya, this is, yo, na, ya, amanale, ho, hapuwa, kala, fa, se, lo, le, cha, diri, se, di wang, eh, this, thwane, le, za, mo, tio, tla, me, ele, mogoyi, ka, gase, ele, khati, kelo, ya, ama loko, asachaba, korre, tiro, eh, ekono, kudiro, la, mo, le, fe, lonle, yo.
The other proposals include giving more powers to the minister to, to effect compliance with the legislation.
Darus, are weke forstale, um, mehr machte, on di minister te gin, um, herei inskiklikai, te bewerkstale, that menze, di, wetnoko.
Eh, we ya, this is, yo, kape, tedi intitwe, ke, eh, ele, korone, enaya, ministera, di tata, tsahu, dira, tsuetzo, eh, ya, korre, hui ko, bela, melao, malebanale, molautomo on.
It also proposes that the minister be responsible for the establishment of a gas master plan.
Darus, are weke forstale, that the minister, front world, like, might be is, for his stigting, in his skipping, van a gasmeester plan.
Eh, we kape, ebe na, eh, na yang, eh, tona, wi, karabelaba, korre, akono, koto ma, eh, thulohanye, yakonokon, eh, amanang, li, tiru, soya, gase.
So, there are many others that are being proposed in terms of the amendments on, on those proposals.
Darus, wek, other forstale wisegings, in herei wet, this is, ma, neet, a par, what ik, now, genume.
Konari, tedi, we kape, this is, yo, tedi intiyan, na, tedi, ele, kor, dia, umakiwa, malebanale, di mametele, lo, za, molau gase.
So, the committee has not deliberated yet on those proposals. It has to first hear what are the views, and then it will deliberate late, after the public hearings have been finalized.
The committee has, now, noh, neet, beratslag gedun, op, di, forstale wisegings, ni, unz is bezig, um, di publicse opinies, and inso, te vshamo, war, now, unz, dan, yes, dar, opso, beratslag.
Committee, ha, easy, idiri, di tsuetzo, kaha, di titi, yo, tedi dirilwe, di tsuetzo, itlo, kudi, dira, maraho, kafa, di teso, zo, ketsa, pakalaza, disa, nacho, konne, eh, ke, kona, ba, taba, badira, tsuetzo, ka, di titi, yo, tedi dirilwe.
So, we will urge you to express your views, what do you think has to be done with those proposed amendments?
Darum, nu, unz, i, out, um, i opinie, te lig, oer, wat i, denk, gedun, might word, it is, oer, herei forstale wisegings.
Kajalo, relo kopagore, le, thalose, ma yikuwa, alonali, putthulohile, kaha, di mametele, le tenu, tedi dirilwe, momolautomo, oh, korolwakanya, inka, zon.
Eh, we will then, as you have seen, we request all of us to obey the COVID protocols, less social distance, let's keep our mask on.
Unz, frau, wek, as a believe, that herei COVID-19 protocol is, sal, eh, an, ah, nim, and as a believe, social, abstandstuning, barthig, and wek, i masker, te, ala, tai, ra, gopau.
Ebe, la, kaper, thloho, lo kopagore, le, tso, lepe, le, linseliko, bela, melao, meteo, ya, tsaka, lafi, kona, janon, jana, lun, lunselu, katohani, le, baba, we, lohna, lunselu, tinta, di maski, talona.
Secondly, we will request that we give opportunities also to others, so we must stick to the time allocated.
Unz, frau, wek, as a believe, that unz, allmal, geleendt, gin, um, a spreek, we're, te krai, what wek, pran, and that us, as a believe, pari, tidsparke, sal, hau.
Ebe, la, kaper, ba, ta, korre, ritusa, nen, kahu, dira, koru, mongole, mongole, anne, le, chuno, ya, hubeu, kajalo, dira, jalo, kahu, ngaparela, nago, ewi, ney, twing, ya, hubeu, oska, ikola.
You are allowed, when you come to the podium, to take off your mask, so that you can be audible, but also for those who use sign language, can be able to read, eh, when you speak. Those, that is, the, that is, the, the, the grounds where you are allowed to take off your mask.
Unz, ma, wek, vergening, verwanier, i, by, di mikrofon, come stand, um, i, redet, lewe, that i, as a believe, i, masker, shall, verweider, this is, wek, om, forshining, te mak, that i, duidlik, wurbare, is, ma, wek, for, di gene, wat, doofes, and, van lipetal, gebraik, maak, this, makliker, maak, um, i, mon, te siin, and i lipet, te kan, lees.
You are allowed to...
Halu, bua, lo, tla, kupiwa, katswe, tse, le, klosa, maski, ha, ubua, eh, le, baka, ele, kor, ekono, kuto, la, senke, me, mogudi, moghamo, korona, le, bato, ba, ele, kor, bone, basole, korona, le, ma, kitiri, soya, puo, ya, diata, so, hapa, libile, we, na, ubua, ba, kona, kor, le, ba, di, poona, ma, tsahu, koru, waring, koru, ba, kona, kothalohanya, kjo, ne, ma, baka, aw, akobo, ukupiwa, klosa, maski, ha, ubua.
You are allowed to use the language you are comfortable to express your views.
I is, wek, welcome, um, i tal, te gebraik, war, me, i gemaklik, full, um, i opinies, out, te lig.
Ole, tete, tse, koru, okabua, puo, epa fe la, oh, obatan, hui bua, ha, o, tla, bo, onale, sa, kaka, sa, koru, ubuwe.
Lastly, when we call the numbers, we will use these chairs that are upside down for those who will be speaking.
Lastens, unz, sal, di, persone, wat is spreek, we're, will, he, a number, ge, and he, sal, dan, beveg, na, herei, stule, ini middle, war, op, he, he, number, wek, sal, dan, go, on, plas.
Janon, ritloho, na ya, mongole, mongole, o, buan, nomore, me, o, tla, bo, udula, mo, di, tulon, tedi, fano, fa, nomore, ya, kah, eh, tsama, isana, le, pa, lo, ya, di, tulon, tse, koya, komorah.
We request and urge you to stick to five minutes, so that we can cover as many people as possible in the house.
Unz, vershuk, and, moedegi, wek, on, as a believe, om, by, di, five minute, tidsparke, te blai, so that, allmal, geleendt, can krai, om, ol, opinies, te lig.
Kajalo, ralorutlu, takatu, tse, korre, lo, ngaparela, na, ko, ewi, ney, loe, ele, kor, akare, tsabale, banzika, mo, kona, kating, mote, kha, kantu, eno, kah, holo.
If we still have time, we will give a person for the second, to have a second bite.
So, unz, tait, oeri, sa, unz, a persone, geleendt, gin, om, we're, a twoere, spreek, we're, te krai.
Kajalo, ha, resantani, renale, nako, rekana, ragonaya, chuno, ya, bo, be, di, kape, koru, ubuwe, ha, ele, kor, noso, tui, kilawa, bua, har, nale, nako.
In the event you couldn't finish, we will still take your input through the secretariat, that is behind me, that is recording.
In the gefold, that unz, tal, ni, mehr, tait, he, om, mondelinge, terhfuur, te krai, ni, sal, unz, i, geskrevi, terhfuur, an, far, and that can, ingedin, word, by, di, secretaris.
Fa, 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 san, nali, chuno, ya, hubeu, tla, kopa, korre, kongo, ukale, ngongore, koya, kah, me, we, neye, di, secretary, zarona, korre, bat, sama, ya, li, yon, eh, etabi, ele, ngongore, koya, kah, ewi, inti, tse, eh, yo.
Now, can we then take hands, the first round, on, on those who want to speak, on the proposed, please, we are dealing with the proposal on amending section, on amending the Gas Act of 2001.
Unz, ma, now...
There is a first hand, yeah.
Smak, now, di flur, wek, for, hande, wat, will, dealnim, and, di besprekinge, volgens, di, forstale wisegings, vani gas weight.
Yes, we can take this, there is number two.
So, rekopa, maltoho, ba, kaya, tso, baba, ba, taba, hubeu, basoli, tse, maltoho, koru, ba, tla, kaka, kona, ba, tla, kona, basuli, sa, padi.
This is number three, green set, number three. Number four, the white set. Okay, number, number five. Yes, well. Okay. Okay, number one.
Number one.
The thing we don't agree with in the bill is giving the minister more power to take decisions as an individual.
Di, endeng, war, me, unz, ni, samste, medhi, herei, wetni, is, um, di, minister, wat, i, persone, is, mehr, machte, te ge, um, te besles, or, herei, wetzont, war.
So, sir, sa, du malani, le, sona, fa, seki, sa, du malani, le, sona, fa, ne, ke, korre, ministera, anne, we, eh, wi, karabelo, alin, no, si, jo, ah, korre, adire, di tsuetzo, ka, molautomo on.
We therefore submit that all major gas-related activities must be taken for public consultations. And those consultations must be completed within 90 days, and their outcomes must immediately be communicated to the public.
Darum, me, bitos, wek, on, that, alle, openbare, gas, activity, te, getnim, might word, for, openbare, dealname, and that i, versla, bin, in, yigundag, da, saamgestal, might word, and, wek, an, i, public, gebit, might word.
Le, kor, kanya, di, titi, yo, tedi, dirilwe, di, thwane, te, kor, di, sekaseku, eh, le, kothakshubisi, si, wa, me, eh, hun, siwe, di, kakanso, kazon, eh, le, kota, tla, kazon, amoro, kama, la, ti, akana, 90.
We also submit that the gas master plan must be taken for public scrutiny. Communities must be properly workshop on its contents, and they will also affect them.
Unz, be, wek, farther, that i, gasmeester plan, wek, getnim, might word, for, openbare, oneshuk, and that i, public, alle, inso, might lewe, and that i, public, wek, ingelig, might word, op, herei, forstale.
Me, ebe, la, kaper, ba, tla, kana, sa, koru, mama, ba, king, ansin, jalo, ama, loko, ay, lan, ah, eh, loa, ho, ba, thwane, te, korre, eh, ba, le, ke, huru, tu, ah, le, ho, kati, se, di, a, ding, kasi, di, amanang, leone, ele, kor, ba, tla, kona, hui, tse, sa, ba, thwane, te, kasi, dira.
Moreover, localized gas plants must be included in the gas master plan to take into consideration local dynamics of areas where these activities will take place.
Dan, farther, me, er, might, plaslikke, gasplane, deal, vorm, vani, herei, gasmeester plan, so that, it, deal, kon, vorm, vani, plaslikke, gemeenskap, activity.
Me, ebe, la, thulohanya, konokon, eh, koto, eh, amanale, ma, tla, kamo, onuwa, gase, eh, thwane, te, korre, eh, komele, le, fe, le, le, ri, le, 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 koro, ba, tla, kana, ne, wa, kati, somo, kolo, ne, ba, tla, kana, ba, kona, hui, tse, mo, le, fe, lonle, korre, ki, di, tiro, di, fesi, di, tlen, kudiro, ma, malebanale, on.
I thank you.
Bye, danke.
Kialabo, kha.
Sorry, yamet.
It's my mistake. Come again? That's clear, attack.
Okay, my name is Tabo Feela. Feela.
Tabo Feela. F E E A.
Dumelan.
Greetings.
Hoya, mora.
Kalibitso, kena, mamosa, Susan Komar.
Eh, I am Mamola Susan.
Komar.
Susan Komar, eh, that is my name, Mamola Susan Komar.
My name is Mamola Susan Komar.
Kabu, kabu, dulo, ki, dula, ka, Samaria.
And then I live in Samaria.
Akwun in Samaria.
Le, kenyadi, artisanal mining.
And then, it is an area, basically, a mining area.
This is a minebou gebit.
Eh, naki, le, mamosa, koya, kama, yikuwa, eh, melao, yen, ugonaha, dumelan, leona, because of, DMR, rehatel.
Eh, myself, as, eh, some, someone from Samaria, we actually are not supporting the bill, because we feel that some of the sections are really oppressing us.
Eh, sa, man, from Samaria, kan, ek, ni, say, that, unz, herei, wetzont, war, understani, van, unz, vo, that, somega, van, herei, forstale, wisegings, unz, onerdrak.
On, kai, samosala, hana, jali.
I want to make an example.
Ek, we, a vorbeeld, stal.
Ke, le, di, artisanal mining, huto, le, re, ke, legalizei, tui.
Eh, as some people, they need to be artisans in the mine, we were told that we have been legalized.
Somega, menze, wat, fuckmane, is, ini, mine, word, wek, vertal, that, alle, wet, he, is.
But, in, se, se, sa, halan, DMR, rehatel, la, it, le, tsi, di, mine, di, mine, le, sona, di, rehatel.
But, what we find happening is that DMR is honestly oppressing us, and the mines are also oppressing us.
Dan, van, unz, na, ma, wek, that, herei, department, unz, onerdrak, in unz, onermine.
Jitla, se, smaga, jitla, fe, la, hatan.
I want to stop there, thank you very much.
This is all, where, ek, wek, wek, stop, bye, danke.
My name is Godfrey McKanki.
My name is Godfrey McKanki.
Elina Lakake, Godfrey McKanki.
I'm a community member of what seventeen, in Solplaki.
Akis, a gemeenskap, let, fan, week seventeen, Solplaki.
Kolakomiti, eh, ya, Solplaki.
In line with our quest for gender equality and transformation, as opposed to women being assigned to low levels of responsibility, so that companies can claim that all state-owned and state-aligned entities, that companies can claim their employment women, this bill should make it a law that all state-owned and state-aligned entities, that will be facilitating and monitoring the gas industry.
Unz, shuk, doh, na, geleikai, for, all, for, females, is, that, whenier, herei, sta, besit, eh, enti, tait, eh, menze, will, an, stan, berit, wek, belain, word, medhi, herei, frau, ra, gte, in, geleikai, for, frau.
The bill should make it law that all state-owned and state-aligned entities that will be facilitating and monitoring the gas industry must have no less than 50% of women in managerial and executive positions.
Molautomo onu, o, thwane, te, kor, o, komeka, eh, lo, ya, korre, eh, mota, olonya, molautomo onu, o, amanale, gase, kona, le, basadi, ba, ele, kor, ba, ta, 50%, jakaba, diri, eh, ba, ba, ta, ankaro, lo, mote, kha, eh, molautomo onu, amanang, leone.
Unz, vershuk, that, alle, sta, besit, enti, tait, eh, di, proces, vani, gas, industry, might facilitate, and bestir, so that, 50% van females, in bestirs, positions, angestel, can word.
Also, the, the, the bill must have no less than 5% of people living with disabilities, employed in all levels, and including managerial and executive positions.
Dan, will, i, wetzont, war, of, unz, vershuk, that, i, wetzont, war, wek, inslay, that, minstens, 5% 5% van, persone, mit, gestreamtiere, angestel, word, in, alle, flakke, van, in, in, tre, poste, tot, by, oer, flak, bestir.
Kaper, ba, tla, koru, molautomo onu, o, enu, ewi, le, kor, o, akare, tsahu, koru, kona, le, 5% ya, ba, tso, ba, u, banan, le, bohole, ba, ba, kona, kona, li, tiam, eh, ya, hudi, ra, mo, di, tiron, tedi, tsa, jalo, to, ta, sene, sene, thwane, te, koru, sa, akare, tse, le, ba, ta, ba, ling, mama, emong, abo, menajara.
In this regard, the, the department must also liaise with relevant departments to establish institutions which ensure people living with disabilities are trained and prepared to, to participate in the gas industry.
Dan, in herei, opzich, van, unz, wek, vershuk, that, the department, medhi, relevant, persone, eh, samespreking, sa, om, te, verzeker, that, persone, mit, gestreamtiere, wek, opgelei, word, and, bemachtig, word, om, herei, positions, te, kan, bekle.
Me, vol, so, vol, jalar, tla, kopagore, committee, eh, thwane, te, korre, eh, dira, koru, koto, kis, anu, le, ma, fa, pa, ah, thwane, la, ah, nale, ba, diri, ba, no, ba, 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 ta, koma, mi, sa, koro, kona, li, di, kha, tse, di, tse, wang, tse, ri, ta, tsa, ba, ta, mama, emong, ansin, jalo, koru, ba, kona, kota, ka, rolo, mo, di, tiron, tse.
And this must be law, thank you.
Me, sene, so, eh, sene, so, eh, thwane, te, korre, ene, molau, ralabo.
This might, we, is, bye, danke.
Eh, good morning, everyone.
Hoya, mora, omol.
Eh, dumelan, loche.
My name is Mishak Mbangola.
My name is Mishak Mbalula.
Elina Lakake, Mishak Mbangola.
Mbangola.
Mbangola, Mbangola.
Yeah, eh, national coordinator of Mining Affected Committees United in Action, in short, Makua.
Akis, a national coordinator, for, a organization, genont, Makua.
Janat, kolamo, khat, oh, rubisan, Makua.
Firstly, eh, the concern is that, eh, we as communities, looking at the document you are giving it to us, we find it very difficult to understand, because it's so much of, eh, law-like document.
Di, komer, di, erste, komer, wat, ik, he, is, as a gemeenskap, whenier, unz, a, herei, document, kai, is, this, for, unz, ba, mulik, om, te, verstaan, van, it, is, a, bay, oer, ogdrawende, rechtlike, document.
So, sir, shklakabela, fano, fati, koru, har, le, ba, tokomani, enu, eh, renale, wo, tata, jo, ah, we, thalohanya, kota, koru, re, thalohanya, janka, kona, ta, ta, har, i, balare, le, basin, mo, korona, yukala, fe, la, ele, tokomani, eh, bayan, mulau.
And, given the time from 10 to 12 to go through this document and understand it, it's really a big problem.
And, om, tait, ge, gin, te, word, om, tis, in, 10 year, and 12 year, di, herei, eele, documente, war, be, for, unz, war, klike, problem.
Me, kaper, kona, nako, ya, koto, kaka, ten, koya, koto, koro, mo, to, obale, tokomani, enu, yot, obo, i, fe, tse, kibutata.
And, eh, a question is, that is, who really drafted this? Eh, you'll find that it's lawyers. Eh, you know, eh, not even communities were involved in drafting this.
Darus, my frau, wek, weet, war, klike, herei, document, opgestal, this is, self, kind, prokuree, di, gemeenskap, is, glad, ni, in, agneem, of, eh, ingerup, om, beidra, te, lewe, op, herei, opstelling, van, herei, document, ni.
Me, then, po, so, eri, po, tanyana, fano, fah, ke, kor, senten, tokomani, enu, eh, ekwa, di, le, ke, mang, na, na, hau, ya, la, di, lo, koko, kwa, le, mo, se, kah, korre, ekota, ekwa, di, le, ke, bor, amolau, ba, ba, ne, lo, akare, tsama, loko, asachaba, basa, akare, tsabala, loko, asachaba.
And, eh, if we, we are expected to agree to it, and we don't know what will, eh, what will be the implications, what are the consequences of signing this thing? So, this is a document that is not really acceptable, because we don't know what is in here.
Dan, word, unz, verwa, om, herei, document, gutig, here, sonder, om, te, weet, wat, di, implicansis, ini, gefoge, dar, van, is, darum, kan, unz, dit, ni, gutig, here, ni.
Ya, ek, a, har, i, balare, ba, na, ro, kolo, le, thwane, te, koru, ho, we, renne, ba, tchoba, re, du malan, leone, o, tla, u, ipo, tsa, korre, ha, i, kes, sa, du malan, leone, di, pele, lo, tsa, teng, itlo, kona, di, mo, korona, kes, la, eh, rey, hukuwa, antokomani, enu, eh, balaha, kah, kona, mo, korona.
Lastly, all the mining activities that took place in our communities, we have benefited nothing, but what we have, we find ourselves carrying the brunt of emissions, cracking houses, and, eh, eh, unemployment, poverty, inequality. What will this gas change, out of all what was happening, from 18 something, when the mining came in? What is it, that is gonna change?
Dan, my last, eh, frau, is, herei, mine, activity, in herei, gemeenskap, be, gen, vorde, over, menze, ni, ma, menze, wat, dar, wu, and, ra, di, las, me, di, aitad, gase, di, aise, wat, kraak.
Number one.
Number two.
Number three.
Number four.
Number four.
On gas, on the amendment proposed on the gas act. Yes, number one, number two, number three, number four.
Two, three, four.
Take the chair number four.
Chair number four and number five.
Number five.
And now, um, need to take the gas away.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for sitting for the opportunity.
My name is Neville Felix.
My name is Neville Felix.
You are the devil Felix.
From Ritchie.
From Ritchie.
From Ritchie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, as we can see, the bill came into fruition in 2002.
I always remember 2002.
And it came into force in 2005.
And in 2005, it came.
But what did you say in 2005?
Chair, it has taken us 20 years.
The president has taken us 20 years.
Do you understand my meaning?
That we have been put together to implement this.
That we have been put together for our work to bring in.
I don't know.
But Chair, what I actually want to ask.
What I want to ask is?
What do you want to say?
I'm not impressed with the way we address this issue.
I don't think we should talk about it.
Do you understand?
We should have addressed this issue from regional level until provincial level, and then could have put it through to parliament so that we can discuss these meetings with you.
We must start by talking about two provincial, international flag.
I always remember the province.
Chair, we are agreeing with this bill, with this gas amendment bill.
The president and us, together, we want to implement it.
Do you understand?
We know that the gas is environmentally friendly than the coal that we are using now.
We, um, we know that the, um, the gas that we use will be more environmentally friendly.
Do you understand?
Uh, if we look at other countries like Namibia where they also used gas.
For Lebanon, it's the only gas distributor.
If we look at Angola, who is one of the biggest gas distributors.
For Angola, they are not using gas.
Then we are far behind when it comes to gas.
Then we are really behind when it comes to gas.
Do you understand?
Chair, as from where I said, it looks like to me that, uh, this, uh, gas amendment bill will only, uh, enrich the riches because to get that license, I don't think it will be peanuts to get the license from the energy regulator or NERSA.
Mr. President, I think that to bring in gas will be a big story. As everyone sees, it will be a big story. But I don't think it will be good for me as a normal person.
Do you understand?
Because we don't want the same thing to happen that happened to Eskom whereby we're building billion runs of stations and we can't entertain them.
We don't want the same thing that happened to Eskom to happen here, where a big money is being spent, but it will not be used.
Do you understand?
And it also come to my attention that, aren't we busy now helping Eskom out with this gas bill because as they say that we want to use this gas as a second choice to coal?
This came to my mind, help us to help Eskom with the introduction of this. Because we want the second option to use and not just the steel coal.
And the last thing is, please, we want to know how long will it take for you to finish with these hearings and all these things and when will we get feedback on the whole story? Thank you.
At the end, I don't want to wait too long to make sure all the meetings are clear and when we return. Thank you.
Do you understand?
Yeah, now is the time for the question people to speak and I will speak my language and I'm asking, where is the chairperson that was here in front of us?
It is no time for the deaf people to talk. I don't think the president is the one who is talking.
Okay, since I heard that this is national, that's why I'm here, so I want to see the chairperson in front of me to put in my views since it's been said that he is from national so that me and my group that with me here, I can give my plea in front of him and to him so that he can, uh, see what, how can he attend to our plea?
Okay, let's, let's wait before you translate. The chairperson is a human being.
Okay.
He must relieve himself and we are here, we are listening to what you are saying. Please continue, we are listening to you, we have a team of people who are recording what you are saying today. So the chairperson will come back, don't worry about that.
Yeah, what I want to say is thank you for the opportunity that the, uh, people from parliament are here today. My request or question is I ask the ministers to also talk to the, uh, local government of the Northern Cape to give, to tell them that they have not to forget the people of Platform 10 who are cited aside to where they are situated alone so that the government can also go to Platform 10 and do things together with the community of Platform 10. And even if the parliament can go now in the different departments, they won't see any people from Platform 10 in the department offices. People have just got their matrix results last week or yesterday, sometimes ago now, but most of them will go work on the farm with their matrix certificates and then most of them go to the dumping site with their matrix certificate. Is that fair that the department in the Northern Cape is treating as the question people of Platform 10?
And so, I mean.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Can, can that person who is speaking come back and tell us their name? We need to record that.
Yeah, I can also speak a little bit of English and African because I went also that school. My name is Dala Sibongo. Dala Sibongo. S.I.B.O.N.G.O. Greetings to everyone. It's for me is a privilege that I greet everyone who is present today. Me also, I am from Platform 10, just behind. At Platform 10, we are not getting the benefit from Platform 10. We are, things are very hard to us since the late president Nelson Mandela has passed on. And Platform 10 is the poor, the poorest where we are living and as we heard that the chairperson has said, Platform 10 is a private place and it's rich in minerals. And we, the people of Platform 10, we don't know where to go and look for help so that people can come in Platform 10 and search for that type of energies that we have to give us a, uh, job, employment opportunities so that we, the youth, can develop ourselves and also to give development to our kids. That is a factor that a lot of our school going kids are now starting to drop out of school because there's no example to the matriculants that made school finish in front, before them that show that this is an example, I'm at school, I got matrix certificate, I have this decent work that can be back to my community, so I'm the development of the community. That example is not there, that's why our kids are dropping out of school and they are doing, start doing criminal, criminal activities. We only see different people when it's time for election, when they come that side with their different views and their different pleas, but when the elections goes, is passed, then we see none of them. So, but it's been said that we are living in a democratic world, where is the democracy? After the elections, all the people left us and it's only us that remains in Platform 10. We are the people that we have our language, we have our vision, our missions, but the departments are not doing research to come down to our location to do research and see what, uh, have, do we have in Platform 10 which we can work on to develop our community. We are rich in culture, we have our own language, but due to these things, our culture and our language is going behind. And even our matriculants didn't get opportunity or get buzzers to go and study further. When you apply, all the response that our people get is the subjects that is being taught at school is weak, it can't reach that criteria of the buzz or the university or college where you applied for. Lastly, I will say that, that we are still living in a autocratic world, but now the government says it is democratic. That, the reason why I'm saying so is if you go to different departments, officers will never see our people with our language in the office that can help our elders, but for other languages, they are there. So that is my worry, why is not, things are not happening in our favor in this country, but in the favor of others? I will be very happy if the, the parliament can take what we just said, the previous speaker in front of me is also from Platform 10, what he said and what I just put in together so that they can implement on that to see. If that will be happen, I will be very glad to the parliament or to anybody who will, who will help us.
Thank you very much. Again, can you come back and say your name?
Uh, my name is Rena Kashi. R.E.N.A. K.A.S.H.I. Thank you.
Hello and thanks for this opportunity.
Good day and thank you for the opportunity.
You are the normal Siwa.
My name is Normalangasiwa.
My name is Noangalang, Noangasiewa.
You are the secretary of the South African National Miners Forum.
I am the secretary of South African Miners Forum.
I am the secretary of the South African Miners Forum.
And also a member of communities that are affected by mines.
And also a member of communities that are affected by mines.
I am a worker.
Being a worker.
A worker.
Our problem is the community.
Our problem is the community.
Is that we are only called in times like this.
Our problems are the people.
Whereby we are called to comment about suggestions which we never developed or created.
Our problems are the people.
Whereby at the end of the day, all these suggestions empower the officials and gives them power and rights.
The people are used to be used by the government and give them more power.
And we as communities who are left stranded and in hardship.
Our communities are left stranded and in hardship.
We are badly treated by people who are given authority such as people who are in front of us.
Our problems are people who are more exploited than other people who are from the forum.
Our experience is that this gas act.
Our understanding of the gas.
Is similar to other acts where we are called to make suggestions.
It's a big, similar to other ways and words that we are required to make.
We as communities, we are given a very big document.
Our communities are required to make.
Which we should express our opinion on.
And our opinions are required.
The very same document which was not explained to us.
The same document is not explained to us.
Some of us do not know how to read and write. There's no one who's called to sit down with us and explain to us about this document whereby we can be able to express our opinion from an understanding point of view.
There is no one who is called to sit down with us and explain to us about this document whereby we can be able to express our opinion from an understanding point of view.
What we know is that the very same gas, just like mines, will eventually brought us problems and hardships.
What we know is that the same gas that will cause problems to us and, um, yeah, we are in trouble.
Whenever we have problems, we have no one to access and ask for assistance or intervention.
When we have problems, we have no one to access and ask for assistance or intervention.
Our experience as the communities is that departments such as that of the premieres are not taking us serious as communities.
Our experience is that the departments are not taking us serious as communities.
I'm requesting all our officials here to go and check together with the MR as well as the department of the premier.
Our phrase is that the government is not taking us seriously.
This agreement is evidence that our government is not taking the communities serious.
The following, um, our agreement is that the government is not taking us seriously.
This agreement has given the mines all the powers to oppress the communities.
Our agreement is not taking us seriously.
There is no one who is helping us. Every department which we are approaching is not giving us access.
Every department that is going to us is not going to us.
What we know is that today we are here engaging about the gas bill.
What we know is that we are here in discussions around gas.
Which you don't even know.
We don't understand the concept.
The very same bill which will eventually bring problems for us and for our children.
The same words will cause us and our children.
Uh, in conclusion, I'm saying these officials who are here must take us very serious as the community and not to come to us.
At the end, I don't think the government and the people who are here are not taking us seriously.
Good morning, everyone.
You are the members.
My name is Graham and my surname is Ross. I'm speaking with two caps, with two, I'm speaking with two caps.
I'm speaking with two.
As the president of NGO Equal Treatment Spiritual Forum.
I'm the, um, chairperson of an NGO.
And his spokesperson for the Business Forum Northern Cape, Central Northern Cape Business Forum.
And I am also the speaker of the forum that I have been called to.
A company, my chairperson, Mr. Gerald Versaghi, the chairperson of the Business Forum.
And the president of the Business Forum is also here today. Mr. Versaghi.
Hello, 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 Makua, Makua. You have done that before and you are doing it again, you are noting it.
We say thank you for the innovation, for the idea.
And thank you for the idea.
This idea is long overdue of coming to the community, um, to the community, parliament to the community.
It's been a long time coming and waiting that the parliament has to come to the community.
Proverbs 31 verse 8 says, "We must speak for those who can't speak."
21:28 says that we have to speak for you, but we can't do it.
Proverbs 31, which means we are the voice. Which means we are the voice of the community.
That means we are the stakeholders.
We don't want to make a proposal. One of the speakers here had a, had a, had a thought that. Ein von den Sprechern hat eine Idee vorstellt, dass diese Idee mit geriefen wird und mit Ohr getan wird, dass uns eine bessere Verstandhoudung kann geben an die vorgestellte Wettgebung, was noch die Wette ist noch nicht, was die Gedanken von der Gemeinschaft konkret und zurückgefasst wird, dass die kann Wirtschaftsweisen und Parlament zurückangegeben werden, dass es kann Wette mit wird.
One of the previous speakers also indicated that it would be a fantastic idea that the government comes to the community and they come and sit with them, help them to get an understanding around the bill and then get their suggestions and then thereafter, after getting all the suggestions, take it back to our parliament and then be able to put in place a bill that everyone understands and that everyone can adhere to.
So that the Gemeinskap eine bessere Idee hat, damit vorgestellt, adokommenties gekieszt werden, Afgevardigtes von den verschiedenen NGOs und Weichgemeinschaftsliehers.
Committees have to be chosen.
Parlament mit adokommenties vorstellt, so dass sie mit uns auf die Grund kann unterhandeln, dass uns kann die Moets und die Munis kann weht, so dass uns kann, so dass uns kann Inzetten insa leber und von darauf, da kann ich wieder zurück an Parlament, dann kann man von darauf zusammenstimmen, dass wir die Gedanken, wir die Idee von Parlament, von nationaler.
We would like to make a proposition that the parliament sets in place various committees on the ground so that there can be a better understanding from downward and so that we can use an upward approach, go back to the parliament and then therefrom have better bills etc. in place.
Ein von den Sprechern hat noch gesagt, als uns nun die Dinge sind recht, das kann dir, kann der Minister, Powers, der Minister von Mag, um zu manipulieren, links und rechts, so dass Parlament, so dass die Regierung von die Dach beharrt wird.
One of the speakers said today that if we agree with this bill, we will just be giving more authority to the minister and they will be able to manipulate us and to use their powers left and right as they are at the moment.
Uns ist blöd, dass Parlament noch totliche Senses gekommen hat, aber das ist unsere Vorstellung, dass so dass uns, dass sie vorstellen, dass ich will doch fragen, dass sie Monster von die Gemeinskap.
We are so happy that the community has come to their senses and we truly appreciate it, but we would like to request, and I would like to request as a member of the community, the following.
So dass uns kann für die, so dass uns kann morgen, als uns die Dinge will vorrentofat, dass uns, uns soll man es sagen von hier, von hier, von hier, von hier, von hier Vergaderung, die Angelehntheit von die Dach, so dass uns kann morgen, als uns die Metapher, als uns das vorrentofat, dass uns kann auch für die internationale Medien sagen, die Regierung von die Dach, uns hat perken gestimmt, dieselbe Mensch hat gesagt, die vorige Regierung hat aparte togepasst, hat das togepasst, so dass uns kann für die, die internationale Medien, die Werder, die kann, kann, kann sagen, die Menschen kommen nach uns, kommen selber von uns, hat die folgende getan, aber als uns viele Idee schehen, Gedanken sind, Inzetten insa leber, dann tun sie nicht, so dass es gut gemacht wurde, so dass, als uns mit die Media praten, national oder, national oder, provinciale oder, oder plastisch, so dass uns kann weht, um zu sagen, okay, uns hat unsere Inzetten, unsere Inzage leber, aber so die vorige Sprecher, was nun hier gestanden hat, dass die, die, die Antenare auf nationaler Flach, provinciale Flach, Distrikflach und auf die plastische Flach, so dass uns kann ernsthaft obnehmen.
We would just like to, to ask the parliament that they should once again please be in a position and state with us as the community, where we can all listen to it, where they can listen to our ideas and so that they can, we can say to our communities, people nationally and internationally, not that our government just comes to receive our suggestions and they do not implement it, but we would like for that to change, where we have a government who actually takes in our suggestions and implement that which has been suggested.
In last of all, I've seen my dear.
In conclusion.
...
Uns ist beschleunigt, so die NGOs und Gemeinschaftsliehers in die, in die breite Community, die ANC hat ein Bill of Rights aufgetreten, hat gesagt, that people shall govern.
The ANC drew up a Bill of Rights and they said that the community will govern.
Ein Professor, ich sitze hier nach vor die Televisiestelle, ein Professor sagt, was die NGOs und die NPOs von die Regierung von die Dach opelisat tonne, so we, we are reverting back to the original, uns sagt, komm zurück mit die Idee auf die Laarflach, so dass uns das kann besprechen auf die Laarflach, und die Orte tot auf nationaler Flach und dann kann jule das Wette machen, dass sie gute Gedanken, tot Vordel von Werks gelehnt ihre, und tot Vordel von die Toesta, warum sie uns nun infinden, mit die, mit die, mit die, mit die, mit die, mit die, die Lichter, was an und die Lichter, was auf, eh, 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 was uns die Stellung ist.
We would like to once again just ask that the parliament comes to the ground level so that suggestions can be made and we work from our way from the ground upward into the parliament, because there's so many problems and challenges that we experience, like electricity, lights going on and off etc. I once saw on the television as well, a professor, professor that mentioned that, where is the NGOs, where are the presidents, where is the community, we have to take the power back into the community and then work it upward to our parliament.
Everywhere we go, they make a submission, insult and leave. And disrupt at some point. You see these chairs that we thought are occupied by people? It's an organization called Makua, which started in Mpumalanga when we started these things. When they come, they want to speak and leave. And leave without giving an opportunity to citizens of that province. Most of them are not from the Northern Cape. I know half of them, we have met them in Mpumalanga, not here. They are depriving you an opportunity to speak, which is why I'm going to open another round of five people. Because wrong people here come and grandstand on national TV everywhere we go. Just to disrupt the proceedings. We have not heard enough of what the Northern Capers are submitting to us because a national organization, which is called Makua, which is why I want it on record, come here and say they have not been told about the bill while they have participated since last year. Must we go and give a document to each and every body of them? We have given to the organization, they have participated. It's abuse. And unfortunately, I am given these powers by the chairperson to chair. I'm going to say this. Probably he was not going to say it, I'm going to say it, I'm saying it, they are abusing this committee. Can we take five people who want to speak from the Northern Cape? One, two, three, four at the back. I said five. Mama, is your hand up? I will take her because she's a woman. Can you forgive me the two of you? Okay, let me take you, six, seven, eight, and we're done. Can you follow that? Yes, can you translate?
Good, I can't say the means that here get proud it or sit or sit where family. On site, get proud with means of an N R O S, and we can means in the private sector. And we partai, for sky partai and organizations was okay. I will need it by diet like style per record that are is next special as on Makua any. He look come or else now is vergadering stew. He look on believe a guns, he on very good the vergadering. He look will out speak beer cry and then loop a live here. This is means of near span here the streak is near he look on from Mpumalanga off. And he on name of here the stadium the means of the North Cup. Uh, Glandite, oh, he look up in his to live. Uh, this the very means of that here in come, need of the TV will prand and the vergaderings coming on very. Ons will grow for five means of Glandite here to prad or set now nige. Uh, and this is rareg. Makua say wek for ons that he look niks go where it van here the way to entwerp nee. Uh, he look will for ons say that he look near the documenta get cry nee. I can wait no for he look now verwacht that he look the document per hand, per person will entfang nee. And of he look now what will he any where the documenta is on the organization o'erhandig. Uh, this is richtig a misbrauk van here the committee and gmeenskap that he look dance doon. Darum malcos the floor for the laster round to up for means of the North Cup, oh, he look up in his to live.
Uh, model is lower and I'm also here on a batilla what halos a my swaro. Ah, ah, Saratine, ah, Batoba Makua. Eh, we la simula a halos a fan of a quarter, roche barlin ten fan of a recator, le Batoba ma Coco, ah, faro laha nee. Me, a copanijana, relish, oposse, goha, huna, hor, huna le epe ya zona, eh, le hori. Eh, so le le diua kuahu di moja, he is a babang, le bo, eh, f, f, le bo, ne, ba ten jalo de jalo. Marma, tata, Arnoldo, neka Makua, ke hori, ha, committee inze, it's a maya, eh, the profession, inze, the faro laha nee, na ko le na ko. But a ma Baba setzemo ra ho. Eh, seba if kambasi dira, Baba ta hubua, halva fe sa hubua, Baba ta ho tama. Eh, barita zebe, eh, ba chweyada di copano, czarona, hor diskeza, tama, senteka, thula haan. Ha, ba i pele na ko, ya hori, za horu, luna la ring, boar bo ne, Baba ta hori, za horu bo ne, baring. And basimuluze, eh, ho, chua bo ne, usimula komo Mpumalanga. So, ba, ba tama, ba ta, honu le, honu ko, committee aruna, inze, it's a maya ten. So, seba sidira, man, tama, Baba ta ho amo ha luna, Batoba Northern Cape, chuno ya hubua, ka hune, ba tata di baka. Sele kabene le moja zona, luna li bua, kikano le ba ka leu, eh, ba tanga bunzi, ba fa cha ba bua, haba fe tamo, Baba sa reza, hori. Luna, eh, di, eh, di, eh, talona, kise di feng. So, we do lastilo, a halos ayalo, hori, eno, orati lo, hori, a tla kisen, tla eno eh. We do lastilo, waruna wa kono, kono, ona skita, ay bua, me, eno, obono, ho tchanela, hori. A e halos a ka hune, banne zo hori ta zebe, ibile kape bar. Bar bo ne, hey si ba zei, ba, hey si ba tama, ba ne we bill, hoza, malakchomo, oh, oh, orna lo one. Ha, ba biwa marurka, hori, ba tubo, cha Baba ta mo copano. Bannei we, malakchomo, oh, hori, ba o shebe, horu warri. Me, haba di cha fa ba bua, ma, ka fa le cha kur leleu, bar bo ne, hey si ba tama, ba ne we, bill inzen jalo. Ke kalone le ba ka leu, eh, we do lastilo, are, we, we kuca, hori, bar, abuse. Ah, one, so, eh, eh, ba, Baba ta ho abuse a committee arona. Ha, Baba ta ho dirisana lo, ne, ke my swaro, ay, lo, hori, kea bo ne, eh, na, we do lastilo, are, ha, rat, oh, Baba ta hori, nuitsa, hori, ke moja, oh, ba dira kawana, oh. Hone, jana, jana, ukipile man, toho, a, hori, oh, Baba ta hori, reza, Ba Toba, tama, mon, mon Northern Cape, hori, ene bo ne, ba buang. So, inele mo lae za wa, we do lastilo, waruna, oh.
First of all, let me take this opportunity to create the panel and the house at large. May you please be greeted. Eh, my name is.
I will first sense, need a committee in the panel, yeah, is wek grut.
My name is Kariso Gao Le Helwe. What a beautiful surname. Please spell it, narrate it nicely. Is G, G A O L E, H E, L W E.
My name is Kariro Gao Le Helwe.
Linealameke, na, eh, Kariso Gao Le Helwe, eh, klinealame leo.
I'm from, I'm from Badli West in, uh, the Khathong municipality.
I come from Badli West.
The Khathong?
In the Khathong municipality?
Yes.
Ketsua ko, eh, Badli West, go municipality wa the Khathong.
A place where most people, they just come there and mine. And after mining, those people, they just leave at their place like a dump inside.
This is a place where the means of come mine. And when you're a klar, a mine by activity, they get unit loss, a the place, so the store things there ain't.
Eh, le le felo le, Ba Toba, le, banzi, ba tango, holona, mo, le felo la di mine, eh, ba fa ba dira, tiro ya mine, haba fe tamo. But a ma, ba la, cha kanze, di tu, tu, bulu, felas, a ma, la, bar, toh, le, so, so.
So, I, so I think that, let me come closer. So, I think that, uh, I think that the community should be at the center of any discussion and, okay?
I think that the gmeenskap and the Karen might weers, van enige besprekings what plus find.
Katala, what la, hori, committee, banne, carolo, ya kono, kono, ya mi, toto, epe, eh, swaro.
And reasonable timeframe should be given to that community to make an impactful contributions.
And that wek redlike times around work and the gmeenskap is kipar, malk might word. So, it he look, impakfula, by draws can give her.
Me, le le, ko le, me, le, le, la, so, cha ba, mo, le, felo, le, ba, so, le, zo, hori, ba ne we chuno, ya, hori, mo, tomo, me, mo, wa bo ne. A tla kisemay kuca, hoza, di swale, za, ha, ho, zedi na le mo sola.
The issue of capacity building should be at the center of that community based public consultation.
The question for capacity types bow might on the Karen vs. van da, the besprekinga, where the gmeenskap by can bot find.
Me, so, sa, kono, kono, so, swanzen, sa, diro, ho, swanzen, cha, diro, hori, malokas, cha ba, mo, ba, ka, ti, se, di, we, di, kono, tiro. Ha, ho, tota, mo, hori, ba, ta, ba, kono, so, la, la, mo, le.
Young people should not be left out as they are the determination of the future.
Young means of meet me, I'd allow it, not, oh, that he look a bepanende factor is for the tocoms.
Me, ha, hu, diro, jalo, ba, sha, ha, ba, swan, na, ho, ta, la, kamora, ho, kala, ba, ka, la, hori, ke bo ne, is a, ho, ya, ro.
The priority should therefore be extended to women and the most neglected people in the land, people living with disabilities.
Then might Frauens wek geprioritize here word, as wek the means of the meester of skip word in here the land, and this means of met gestreamt here.
Me, Ba Toba, ba, swanzen, ho, tele diua, kuahu, pele, tata, mo, ho, seno, eh, swanzen, ho, eh, ne, ba, sa di, me, ha, pele, Ba Toba, ba, telenka, bo, ho.
I believe that the bill, the bill should rather focus on local beneficiaries.
I will grow, blight by eh, that here the way to entwerp might focus opi, blaslike a gmeenskap, and that he look can be for deal word or aid.
Me, bile, kiya, kanya, hori, malakchomo, ono, oh, swanzen, ho, na, oh, chomang, mo, hopolo, tata, mo, ho ring, Ba Toba, le felo, eh, tiro, diro, mo, holone, ene bo ne, Baba, so, la, la, mo, le.
All this should be communicated publicly and in line with democratic processes.
This might wek public ge, bemark word and wek be line word medie democratic process.
Me, tu la, ha, you, eh, yo, ke, eh, swanzen, ho, eh, we, we, pa, khalasa, ho, la, telewa, eh, tu la, ha, you, eh, be, we.
Thank you very much.
Bye, donkey.
A very good example, thank you very much.
This is a very good for a build, bye, donkey.
It comes to time, can we keep our time at five minutes or less?
This is a very good for a build of timesgabri, can use it how by five minutes or manner, as a brief.
So, or, fa, bete, sa, ka, sa, 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 obulukile na ko, reko, pa, hori, luna, haraka, diro, felas, a, inzen jalo, ramo, le, bo.
Greetings to everyone.
This is Jason Miranda.
My name is Jason Miranda.
Eh, linealameke, Jason, eh, Miranda?
Uh, thi, uh, the platform ten ke.
I is from platform ten.
Me, na, ke, toa, ko, platform ten.
Di, who, eh, di, what, eh?
The difficulty that I'm having is.
Government, na, we, private investor, tamit, eh, quin, se, ta, dorot, I, di, no, Makosi, ah.
Eh, my difficult that I'm having is the agreement that the government makes with the private sectors.
Eh, but, ta, ta, bo, ke, di, tu, balan, so, upuso, eh, di, dira, le, di, te, wo, ta, private.
Anakwena, ah, ka, kuwe, hom, king, anakotina.
They don't inform the people that are in the place where they want to do anything.
Katala, ha, ba, buisane, le, ba, Ta Baba, le, mo, le, felo, le, ba, tlen, ho, ta, ho, diro, ngu, bo, holone.
Ma, kwanai, ta, kit, garat, eh, we, uh, bill, temia, eh, we, has, si, wa, ni, in, jan, go, we, ta, eh.
Eh, my plea is that the bill that we're talking about, the gas, should be made in this manner.
Malau, oh, wa, has, eh, malau, chomo, ono, wa, has, oh, buang, kawane, luna, oh, swanzen, ho, eh, di, re, kayo, ne, so, la, eh.
Ma, ta, mo, ti, Andres, investor, wa, hu, ta, to me, eh, me, ne, his, enter, and, I, kine. And, eh, ta, area, kana, ka, government, eh, am, investor, am, de, do, ah, do, eh. I, kink, anakotin, kona, a, kiyak, aya, ka, da, hon, ana, swear, ma, ah, do, ku, si, we, ta, eh.
Katala, ha, pa, che, ilo, ho, puso, eh, ba ta, ho, ki, sa, ba, bele, zima, dimona, kenyaro, na. Ba swanzen, ho, ha, ba, ta, le, bo, ne, ba, bitsa, kape, le, maloka, asa, cha ba. Ho, ta, ho, ba, bon, sa, hori, tiro ya, mo, eh, po, hoza, ya, mine, eh, ritle, hu, diro, eh, ritle, hu, diro, fanofa, me, Ba Toba, ah, me, ha, mo, ho, yone, ki, ba.
Kwanai, tiya, or, temu, eh, me, ne, si, ki, ah, ti, ngavaj, ah. Tiya, kona, complain, eh, ti, hanal, na, o, zindawte, eh, karakuero, sin, giamahu, ti, te, me, ne, kuri, na, honu. So, ngo, ah, ki, te, eh, kona, nde, eh, la, ku, ah, ka, ensino, ah, me, ne, ki, we, do, ku, ti, eh, ta, no. Ana, tuni, mu, ah, na, eh, angavaj, ah, tako, me, eh, okay, we, cha, ka, je, do, ma, we, we, ta, ko. Hanam, oh, eh, ka, ito, un, ah, no, eh, we, cha, mu, ka, ito, ah, ah, kuri, o, iki.
We really be happy if you can get this case that you're talking about so that things can go well in our communities.
Things that damaged, our TVs are damaged. When we go to Eskom, they say, "No, move forward, there's nothing that we can do." They have their own people that they assist.
We really like the government to assist us quickly so that we can really get help. Really, we don't know what to do because we are suffering.
When the government comes, it comes with people from outside to come and work. And us, we don't participate, we don't benefit anything. So we would like when it comes to come and assist us addressing those issues, that it can use people from our communities and our children. When the government comes to our communities, we want to help people from outside. Fortunately, people in our communities who don't participate in any of these activities and who also don't care about the world, we would like to ask the government whenever they come to our communities to learn and to learn in different ways.
Just like our Northern Cape Premier, when he employs people from outside, our children are staying here, they're not working, you will hear some people speaking unknown languages to us that we don't understand.
After the World Cup, the Premier works with people from outside. For us, we don't work, we don't have academic background, and whenever they want to work, they come back and talk about what we don't understand.
Our children are suffering because they're using drugs and because they're not working, they're physically hurting around.
Our children are very tired of their sleep, and they don't have time for activities that they don't need.
Please assist us, Parliament, you are really suffering.
The Parliament wants to play for them, that they will help us.
We know that when they come to assist us, the minister and the premier will employ other people, their people, they will not go to our communities and employers. Now we have our registered companies, but they're not working because they have their own people.
Whenever the minister and the premier comes to our communities, we bring them together, and we would like that people from our communities choose to work. We don't work in our organizations, but our organizations also want people who work.
You hear them saying they want people who have certificates and experience. Where will get that?
They want people who can work, but they are unfortunately inexperienced. Where do they get the experience?
They say when you're talking, I just be short.
Whenever I talk, I am short.
I'm definitely sure you know it. You can't do that. Continue, man.
We as PlaDin people is not recognized by the government because many people in South Africa, East Rokers North, recognize the government.
If you go to PlaDin and see the toilet, the toilet is not in the good condition.
Many people have no ID, they are suffering to get ID by Department of Home Affairs.
Some of the houses is broken and we are going far away to collect wood and there's not electricity in some of the houses.
Even some of the houses, we have a tap and we go to fetch water from nearby.
There is many metrics, even metrics they went to farm with their matrix and forget, there's no job for the metriculant.
There is no income to buy some school uniform for the school kids to go to school.
That is all from Mercedes that they want to put on mine of the government, the department to help us.
We are long since 1990 from here and we are suffering.
I'm from the Solplaki Sub-District.
I have one question though, and that is if this bill were to be implemented, how would this be beneficial to the people of areas like PlaDin and Richie?
Whenever the Department of Power and Energy came and brought in the solar panels, there were very few people who actually benefited from this.
By many people who are unemployed because I come from a workless community, by many people can't afford solar plants in this city. So in that case, the people sit still in the dark as it's load shedding. And I feel that with this gas, it will still be the same case.
So I come from a community where the majority is unemployed or we have a high unemployment rate, and most of these people will not be able to afford solar panels. So I have this feeling that should this gas bill be implemented, we will still have the same problem where people won't have access to it and we will still be sitting in the dark due to load shedding.
to help the people who cannot afford these kinds of energy resources, to help them benefit from this?
Good afternoon, my name is Heni Greif from Pixley Kasemi District Municipality.
I'm from the Pixley Kasemi District Municipality.
Okay, I also got a question regarding the implementation as a previous speaker.
I have a question about the implementation, just before the speaker.
Okay, usually the implementation is governed in the regulations?
Generally, the government has to make the arrangements.
Okay, according to the bill, gas traders and producers have to be registered and they will be monitored.
According to the regulations, gas is registered and registered.
Okay, the district municipality has municipal health functions which include like the surveillance of premises for foodstuffs and communicable diseases and those kind of things.
The district municipality has health materials in place where the monitor is monitored for, for example,传染性疾病 and health.
It also includes air quality monitoring and pollution, air pollution and those.
That's like in the monitoring of the air quality and safety and health.
Okay, should the department or with the regulations consider to make use of the district municipalities, you are welcome to do so?
So the department will make a decision to use it, but whenever the district municipality is welcome to do it.
Because we have the resources to fulfill this municipal health function, so we can include the gas monitoring and surveillance also there.
Our municipality has the functionality to put here the municipal health materials in place to monitor the gas implementation and the monitoring.
However, maybe the officials will need some training in the gas field.
But the administration has to prepare themselves from the gas regulations.
Thank you very much for your inputs.
Bye, thank you for your input.
Just, people may interpret wrongly, when I went out, I was just dealing with her family bereavement.
I want to say it is clear, people have it wrong, I have left because I had a sickness crisis and a family disaster.
Now I hear that there was some commotion at two places when I was outside.
I understand there was a big uproar because I didn't work here.
Let's apologize for that.
I would not forgive you for that.
Because I know it's not something you might be familiar with.
I know it is something that you don't forgive.
For us, it's something that was subjected to everywhere we go.
For us, it is something that is under our business, that we have to do.
But let me say this and I'm not implying anything, I can't come to your house when you have a function and do as I wish.
I mean, it's not disrespect to you, but I can't come to your house if your function is not allowed.
I hope those people who were doing that are from Kimberley or from any part of the Northern Cape. It is wrong to plan when people in that area wants to come and do what they are called for. You come anywhere from the country to go and disrupt them in doing what they were called to do so.
I hope the people who are made of Kimberley are embarrassed because it is very unfair to not go to the place where you have been and not be allowed.
It's complete disrespect of that community.
We had at some point that because they gave us a warning that they will disrupt every public hearing, but we were fair enough to say, when they agreed with the protection service, we said, "Fine, any person who comes to a public hearing, express his or her views is allowed."
What is wrong is to disrupt the proceedings of that forum.
It is disrespectful to our community and we have had a lot of bad luck with these people who can come to our gatherings, but they have agreed with us, they will withdraw and all the evidence will come, but it is not right to withdraw from the law.
Lastly, on this thing, on the fourteenth of November, they were the ones who disrupted a public hearing in Witbank. Today, when they come here, they say they found the document for the first time. They represent mining communities, but they come to the meeting and say, "People don't have information." The moment you get a document, you represent people, you give them the information, not for yourself, because when you are given a document as a leader, you are given so that you can give it to the people you lead.
Last thing, I would like to say that on the fourteenth of November, the organization will open up a new work place and then come today and say this is the first time that they have received the documents. This is not true because the documents are given to the organizers. If the organizer of an organization receives a document not for himself, but it is your responsibility to hand it over to your organization. I can't answer it because it's too loud.
We would rather convert your question into a statement of concern or as a submission.
We would rather it be a question as a statement of concern or as a submission.
Except to say, there is a difference between a project or something that is being proposed and an amendment to a law. The law is there already, all what it says currently forested. This is how, if you've got, you are selling the gas, these are the conditions you are selling the gas on. If you are producing a gas, these are the conditions you are producing, you'll produce a gas. But now they say, in that law, they want to amend the law, it doesn't say, "We are bringing gas," no. It says, "When you work with gas in other conditions," these are the other conditions. That is the only thing that it says. It's not saying there is gas that will come to the Northern Cape or any part of the Northern Cape or anywhere. It says, "This is how gas regulations will look like across the country, wherever you are."
Now, it is clear that there is a project and a change in the land. The land belongs to the people. The difference is that with this land, there are certain values and there is planning on the values that people might generate, produce and handle gas, whether it is changed or changed. This means that when we talk about this land, that there will be a gas transfer to the land. This goes to the changing or the change of the values that are produced and handled in the land and it will be implemented in the land according to the existing land.
This is a big problem. We have to solve it. 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 We have to solve it.
Now, this was the last round, good people. You can't make a decision and then parliamentary rules don't allow it, make it and change it. Please, unfortunately, like I said, one, in a meeting you must be pointed, otherwise everyone, except in my chair, you are allowed to come front and accept if there was a word that touched you, but in any meeting for me that I know, you raise your hand, then the chair must point at you. But to just move to the chair, worse when it was said that you are taking the last round. I will request in a very peaceful way, that information, like I said before, you can bring it here on the table so that it can be recorded. That's how the procedure works.
Now, I would like to say that whenever we make a decision, we can't change it. It's sad and I see it with respect that you have to understand and it's a matter of that the person has a hand up, is acknowledged, is the president, and then sits in the room. The last round is already decided and people are already aware. People can't do it after the time, they sit in the room to speak again, but you are welcome to sit behind the door.
Good afternoon, my name is Heni Greif from Pixley Kasemi District Municipality.